Welcome everyone to Commissioners' Court. We appreciate you being here with us today. And if you would, please be sure that your cellphones are silenced. And if you have any conversations, please take them outside. At this time, we have Brother Dan Rogers with us to lead us in our invocation. And Commissioner McCam, the pledge is as always, please.
Would you bow with me, please? Father, as we come to the close of another year, we are so blessed and so thankful. We can just look back and recognize all the things that you created for us to be able to enjoy here in this county and in this state. And we realize that we are a fortunate people. And Father, I thank you for each one of these folks in this court who represent our county, whether they're volunteers or whether they are employed, whether they sit on this court. We know that you have given us some incredible, incredible people to work with and to work for. And so we pray that you will help us as we begin to look at next year, what you can, what you want to do through us and for us. We ask that you would just continue to be with each one of these folks who make decisions based on what needs to happen best for the residents of this county. And we pray that you will give them wisdom and compassion. I thank you for each one of the residents of this county, and we know that you care for each one of us. You created each one of us. And so we are each one unique. And so, Father, I pray for their safety, for their protection, for their health. Father, we pray as we tell those that you will just be with us today. For it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I plead allegiance to the Texas, one study, under God, one indivisible.
Brother Rogers, thanks, sir. Well, the time is 9:04. We do have an order, a quorum, so we will call this meeting to order. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, sir.
Item number one, consider and take action on minutes of previous meeting of Commissioners' Court held on December 3, 2024. Are there any additions, deletions, or amendments?
Hearing none, Judge. I move we approve the Commissioners' Court minutes regular session on December 3, 2024 as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the minutes of December 3, 2024 as presented. All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. Item number two is consider and take action on a request for refund of overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have three refund checks for court approval totaling $14,714.19.
Court, questions? Two agreed judgments and one arbitration?
Yes, sir.
Now, did, we did go over the deal and looked at two of them. They were similar in appraisals, but one of them was getting a refund of $8,000. The other one, three, but we figured out on there what the deal was. One of them pays their taxes part of the Kaufman County that Maybank saw. They're paying back as the county tax. The one at the bottom there was paying school, county, city, and all that stuff. So that was a big difference in that. Kind of had you confused there.
Rightly so. Any other questions or comments? Entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the refund of overpayment taxes as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCam to approve the request for refund of overpayment of taxes from the Henderson County Tax Assessor Collector as presented. All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number three is consider and take action in accordance with Section 6.03 of the Texas Property Tax Code to cast ballot for Henderson County Appraisal District Board of Directors 2025. And, Court, this is a part of the, what you would call the, I'll call landmark legislation, that restructured the appraisal district board, not the appraisal board, but the board of directors that is the governance, for the lack of a better example, the Commissioners' Court of the appraisal district that is in charge of setting the budget and personnel matters. This group is not in charge of appraisals. But as I was saying, there was a change in the last legislative session that shuffled and added three members to the board that can run for the position publicly and serve two-year terms. Today, because of that legislation, every member is up for vote. And now, each entity that is a part of the appraisal district has a number of votes. Henderson County is the largest single vote holder of all of the entities that are a part of the appraisal district. We have over 1,100 votes. And historically, what has been the process of this county is to cast those in this process, and historically, we have cast those for the individual of which that we've nominated. And therefore, Henderson County has always had a representative on that appraisal board. There are several individuals. Every entity gets this official ballot. And we are free to spread those votes around. But each time that we do, we dilute the number that we have for our representative. So therefore, the prevailing wisdom has been to put those votes solely and totally toward our representative. And in this case, it is Maurice Cox. I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can.
I know Ms. Sherr, we appointed her because Mr. Cox said there's a time limit that they can, how many consecutive terms they can be. And he timed out and had to be removed, be replaced on the board. And we've replaced him back on there now to finish out her term.
We did. And they brought his name forward.
So he is willing to?
He is willing. We have, we have some individuals that we'd like to bring to the court, or to the court for appointment upon Mr. Cox's resignation. But due to the timing and the changing of the landscape that is the governing board by the actions of the legislature, this was the easiest process to keep things moving, provide the stability of a seasoned individual on there, and to assist the district in getting reorganized.
So this part here is just, when, when the dance expire?
Hers expires December 31st.
31st?
Yes.
So this is a, I was starting over.
This is starting, yes. And normally, we do not have this many before us. But because of the changes driven by the legislation change in the last session, all members are up. And there is documentation explaining the terms. These will be staggered at the direction of the district.
How many members are on the board, appraisal district board?
Now, there are seven or nine total because now, pardon?
Nine.
Nine. Because you also have on here who is a, now a voting member but not eligible to vote by statute. Our tax assessor collector is now a voting member on this board through that legislative change.
And the nine have to be elected. There's only seven on here. Three of the, three of the nine have to be elected.
What's before us today is the, the vote on the, what is the core of the board. What I would suggest to the court today that the number of votes, as I said, is a little over 1,100. And I'm sorry, I don't have that exact number in front of me. If the court wishes to follow the past wisdom, I would ask a motion today for that to be expressed of all of our votes to Mr. Maurice Cox. Because I am concerned that we get caught playing the numbers and we lose our representative just based on how the other entities vote. There are 27, 28, 30-something entities, taxing entities that are a part of the appraisal district. And each one has a vote.
And Maurice represents Henderson County as our vote?
Yes, sir.
So move to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by, I'm, Commissioner Tulley, you got me on the quick vote. Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner McCam to award all votes to, all Henderson County votes to Maurice Cox on the official ballot of the Henderson County Appraisal District Board of Directors. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Court. Item number four, consider and take action to purchase rifle-resistant body armor using the Office of the Governor grant 5092701 for the Sheriff's Department. Ms. Vaughn?
Good morning, Court. This is just a purchase from Shellback Tactical using the grant funds from the Office of Governor for their rifle-resistant body armor grant.
Court, questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the purchase of rifle-resistant body armor using the Office of the Governor grant 5092701 for the Sheriff's Department as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. Item number five is consider and take action to authorize the Sheriff's Department to trade certain firearms to the Athens Pawn Shop. Sheriff?
Good morning, Court. We're asking the court to allow us to trade some seized firearms that, there at the Sheriff's Office that we have no use for. And we were looking to trade them to Athens Pawn Shop for some equipment that, that is needed. And it'll just be a flat trade. They'll get the firearms and we'll get the equipment. And some of the stuff that we were asking for is helmets that are out of date, replacing some helmets that are out of date, and, and stuff that we really need at the Sheriff's Office.
Court, questions?
Have we done this before?
Yes, sir. We've used other, I don't know that we've ever used Athens Pawn Shop, but we've used other pawn shops here locally. And I kind of like the idea of doing business here.
And all of these, all of these farms are seized farms?
Yes, sir. They're, they've all been seized and awarded to Henderson County.
Last time, I think, we used.
Army, Navy?
Army, Navy. But it's, it's been several years since the last time that we did this. Any other questions or comments? If not, entertain a motion.
So move to approve.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner Tulley to authorize the Sheriff's Department to trade certain firearms listed to the Athens Pawn Shop. All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Sheriff. Item number six is receive financial reports. And today, we have the combined JP County and District Courts financial reports. They will be available after court for viewing by the general public. Item seven, consider and take action on payroll, payroll distributions and accounts cash sheets.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have elections payroll, and it's the total, the early voting, week one and two, and the board and manual count. So it's total. And then I also have October's monthly report.
Week one, two?
There was a.
This, is this the total election cost? Okay.
I do have it broken down if you'd like to see that.
No, no, thank you. I thank everyone involved in this because the election payrolls are, because they are overtime, being able to do them in one setting is somewhat of a treat.
Yes.
And this election was $7,081.31 is what's being presented here. Court, questions?
Can you say that again?
Seventy thousand.
Like you said.
I may have, I may have said seven, but it's $70,081.31.
You asked it was seven.
Well, and, and that is with realizing the efficiency of the vote centers. We've got 31 districts now. A return to the use of the single district voting would almost, would increase it two and a half times. Payroll would, would increase two and a half times for a general election, or at least the presidential general election.
Is there a, the ones that we hold elections for, does, does that, do they pay us so much to hold their elections?
When you're talking about the other entities?
Yes, like?
Yes. When we hold elections or conduct the elections for other entities, there is a contract that become, that comes before the court.
Right.
For use of equipment, labor, and so forth, that the court approves before each election is held, where we're holding them for someone else.
So would that price be a deduction off of that, off of the 70, or 70 is what it costs the county?
This was the election day.
Oh, okay.
Presidential, early voting, election day. And there would be additional funds to this for those that would come on, but that would be through the contract. But the expense is the expense.
I got you.
And this does, this, this is one of the purposes of county government, is holding these elections. But it's just a good, very rarely do we get it in a snapshot.
Right.
Due to the nature of payrolls being processed. Other questions, Court? Comments? Entertain a motion on biweekly, oh, excuse me, on election payroll?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the election payroll as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the election payroll as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously. And you said the next one was the accounts cash sheet?
Yes, sir, for October.
Court, questions concerning the accounts cash sheet for a period ending of October 24? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
So move to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the accounts cash sheet for the period ending of October 2024 as presented. All those in favor of the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item eight is consider and take action on submitted contracts, of which we have none. Item nine is consider and take action on a request for right-of-way permits.
One, two, and four.
One, two, and four. Commissioner Spivey?
Yes, Court. Brushy Creek Water Supply will be adding three PVC pipe to existing pipe, last of intersection, of the intersectional State Highway 19 South, down County Road 1104 and 1102. There's, I have added in the backup their detailed plans. There's three permits, but it's the same company. And I'm only going to do the two, there's only two roads. So I'm just going to do it all in one motion if that's okay.
Then would you mind stating the three roads that are involved?
It's just two roads, 1104 and 1102.
Okay. Court, questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the proposed utility line activity submitted by Brushy Creek Water Supply for portions of the right-of-way on County Road 1102 and 1104, located in Precinct Line with the Commissioners' Authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the right-of-way agreement with Brushy Creek Water Supply Incorporated for water line installation on County Road 1102 and 1104 with the Commissioners' Authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously. Commissioner Tulley?
Yes, Court. This is a request from Conquest Wireless for Fiber Optics in Cedar Branch Park Subdivision. They'll be on all, most of these roads are in, in the Cedar Branch Park subdivision. Cedar Drive for 8,500 feet of buried Lynn Street, for 1,800 feet of buried Anderson Lane, 1,600 feet of buried Daniel Drive, 700 feet buried Low Drive, 1,900 feet buried McAllister Street, 500 feet buried Doughty Lane, 800 feet buried, and Birch Road, 600 feet of buried. And there will be nine, uh, two, three, six, five. I have a check for $1,650 for the boards that are in this area.
Court, questions?
Is this the Ratsfee? No?
This is another company.
Commissioner, that was a question that I was going to bring forward. This is not a part of the ARPA project. This is free enterprise.
Yes, sir.
Taking the reins and, and coming in as well, which is kind of what the whole purpose of the program was, to kind of get things jump-started. And it appears we have a new player in town, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? It's going to be tight.
Yeah. Judge, I move we approve our utility line activity for Conquest Wireless in the, on aforementioned roads as stated in Cedar Branch Park subdivision with the Commissioners' Authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley and second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the right-of-way agreement with Conquest Wireless for fiber optic installations on the aforementioned roads in the Cedar Branch Park subdivision with the Commissioners' Authorization to sign. Any further discussion? All those in favor passes unanimously. Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, this is another right-of-way permit for Brushy Creek Water Supply. There's a lot of much-needed upgrades in water lines in the south end of the county. I've had several complaints about no one can get added to the water line because they're all too small. So it looks like they are doing a whole lot of upgrades along the county line. This first one here is on Anderson County Road 404, which 1,600 foot of it is in Henderson County. And so I, you see all the scratchouts in there and changes. I told them that we would approve the 1,600 foot that's located in Henderson County, on Anderson County 404. We have that one there. And then we moved down to the next one that they have, and it'd be on Henderson County Road 4528. They're going to run a six-inch alongside it, about 14,000 foot. And, and there will also be a third one of a road bore that will go under 4528 there at the intersection of County Road 4402 to head north.
Questions for the Commissioner? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for the, approve the proposed right-of-way located in Henderson County on Anderson County Road 404 from 4601 to 1615, and approve the, did I do this, I've done this in two separate.
Do you put them together?
I think I've got, are we going to do them together, or, or, we can do them together, but I've got them in two separate deals.
I'll, I'll do them together.
I'll do them together.
Okay.
If we can. This will be here on Anderson County Road 404 from County Road 4601 to 1615. And the other one would be to approve the proposed utility line activity on County Road 4528 of a fourteen thousand foot and one road bore with the Commissioner's authorization to sign.
I'll second your motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spady to approve the right-of-way agreement with Brushy Creek Water Supply for the installation of water lines along the aforementioned roads with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. Any further-
The two, two roads. Two mentioned roads.
The aforementioned roads?
Two mentioned roads. 404 and 4528.
Yes, yes. Then two, two, two roads-
You said April.
-with the Commissioner's authorization to sign. All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
The heat is going down, so. Highs too.
Item, item ten is consider and take action on submitted budget amendments, which we have none. Item eleven is consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
Yes, sir. This will be your 2024 bill in the amount of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-six cents.
Commissioner Spady?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tully?
None.
Commissioner McCam?
I have none.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions.
Entertained a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 bills in the amount of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-six cents as presented.
I'll second your motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spady to approve the bills in the amount of three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-six cents as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item twelve is consider and take action on submitted flats and associated items.
We have to do 20 Precinct One and 20 Precinct Three, and all these are paid.
Commissioner Spady?
Yes, Court. This is a replat in the Beechwood Estates private subdivision, and they're taking three lots and combining them into one. They have been through the development office, and the signatures are on there as needed.
Questions for the Commissioner? Hearing none, entertained a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to replat Beechwood Estates, Section 8, from what, 185, 186, and 187, to 187-R, located in Precinct One for filing purposes only.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spady and second by Commissioner Tully to approve the replat in Beechwood Estates, creating lot, combining three lots, creating Lot 187-R for filing purposes only. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you. Commissioner McCam?
Yes, I have an appendix U that's in your backup. This is, I think, only the second, maybe third one we've done, second?
Second.
Primarily for the use of small tracts of land that are being split with no development in, in the works on that property. This is a three-acre tract of land on 3622. It's a, an ale-shaped tract of land with another tract inside of that ale, and they're, they're wanting to split that even, take a half acre on the back and make it two recta, even rectangular tracts of land, and sell the one to a third party.
Court, questions? Hearing none, entertained a motion.
I move to approve the appendix U from parcel owners Ash, Alicia Craig, for filing purposes only.
Judges?
With the judge's authorization to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam and second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the appendix U request for discretionary exemption for Alicia Craig, Cody and Alicia Craig, with county judge's authorization to sign. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item thirteen is open, consider bids, which we have none. Item fourteen is convene into executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code 551.074 to deliberate and discuss job applications and candidates for the positions of the Henderson County Fire Marshal and Precinct Two Justice of the Peace. Court, can we have a motion to move into executive session in a time?
I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session at 9:45. I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson and second by Commissioner McCam to move into executive session at 9:45. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Passes unanimously. We will be back.
Well, the time is 11:01 and we will move to item 15 which is reconvene into open session. May we have a motion?
So moved at 11:01.
Motion made by Commissioner Tuley and second by Commissioner Spivey to reconvene into open session at 11:01. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Item 15 is also to consider and take action on matters related or excuse me, matters discussed in executive session. At this time, Court, I believe there's nothing to discuss. We're continuing in our process for the filling of the Fire Marshal and Justice of the Peace precinct two positions. Any discussion, Court? There is none. We'll move to item 16 which is consider and take action to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tuley and second by Commissioner Richardson to adjourn at 11:02. All those in favor? Passes unanimously. Thank you for being with us.